Turn the mic on.
We won't have the.
What was that?
It's not going to get rid of the locals itself. We need them so much.
She wanted to say which one works.
All right, folks, I'll go ahead and call our study session to order. It is six thirty two P M. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I'm against the United States of America. And share their own power for which it stands, one nation, one God, in this law with liberty and justice for all.
The Department of Public Health will come first, please. Councilmember Bill Young.
Redman.
Ray. Jackson.
Pierce.
Lawler. Davis. Preston. Brand.
Sure.
And Nancy. Here. For our study session, just to discuss items that are going to be needed for actions at our regular council meetings. First would be the resolution twenty twenty four ten to adopt the guidelines for the Albion Board of Review for property tax relief in your packets. You should have that resolution. Where's that? Page one thirty seven. Page one thirty seven. What's what? Page one thirty seven of your packet. So we're being asked to adopt this resolution when the Board of Review meets with any individuals that are looking for this exemption. Do we have? Yep. Councilman Friend.
Is this? Is this new? Is it a change in the barbed wire guidelines? Do we have a poverty exemption already in place? So how is?
So they have a poverty guideline, but the poverty guidelines change every year.
Right.
And so what this does is it basically says the city is going to follow the ever changing, ever amending federal poverty guidelines.
Oh, that's what I saw here.
Kind of simplifies things and allows the city to keep current with the feds.
Okay.
And just also to add, the assessors said they also just made changes to make it more user friendly for residents to read through and understand when applying for this. So it's just a flat fifty percent reduction if they meet the.
And then they apply annually. I mean, will they apply as needed?
Yep, annually, yeah. Mayor President Jeff, do you have a question?
No.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this? Next, we're going to be asked to approve resolution twenty twenty four eleven to support the M dot funding for the local bridge improvements. City Manager Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So included on page one fifty is a copy of the resolutions. So we have applied for M dot's local bridge replacement program two years in a row now. We were awarded for the full replacement of the North Albion Street Bridge. And then we were also awarded for preventative maintenance along seven of our bridge structures coming up in fiscal year twenty twenty five. So the last bridge that needs attention is the Haven Road Bridge. So we are looking to submit an application for fiscal year twenty twenty seven. This kind of ties into the dams project that we have going on as well. So we're looking, total project cost is about four point three million dollars. The program does require a five percent local match. So we're saying that we will make the commitment of two hundred and seventeen thousand. So we still have time to work that into our budget because this is not until fiscal year twenty twenty seven, but we are just looking for approval so we can submit that that application.
Questions, comments? Councilman Friends.
So I assume that our approving this and the cost associated with it does not change regardless of which dam project it's in.
Correct. Any other questions? Councilman Williams.
Yes, um, is the Haven, did you say the Haven Road Bridge was the only one that didn't need to be addressed?
Yeah, so it had minor repairs done when we did the Haven Road and River Street project, just some repavement along like the sidewalks, but that is now our worst bridge structure out of all of them. Since the North Albion Street Bridge is being replaced, this one will need replacement as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Is that going to be done about the same time they do the river dam?
Yes, we're trying to coordinate the projects. It's going to, the dams project, it's not an immediate, that's going to be, it's going to take a couple of years to design, get permits and things, but we're trying to, yes, coordinate the two to happen at the same time or relatively around the same time.
All right. Next, we're going to be asked to approve the twenty twenty four bridge inspection by Lightman Engineering. City Manager Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we do this each year. So included in your packet is the proposal to complete the bridge inspections. We're looking at six routine single span bridge inspections and then two routine multi-span bridge inspections for a total fee of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. These inspections, they are due to the state by August. So just bringing the proposal forward for approval so that they can begin completing the inspections. We do this every year.
Any questions or comments on this side? All right. Next, we're going to be asked to approve the Sinagro, I'm pronouncing that correctly, invoice for the digester, the biosolid removal project. City Manager Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I did email you all, I want to say, earlier this year, February twelfth, we had, I made an emergency expenditure. Our digester was getting filled with garbage and materials that should not be going through our wastewater plant. And it was, we needed to clean it out so that it could continue to operate in the way that it's supposed to. That piece of equipment is set to be replaced in the project coming up this summer. However, the cleaning of the digester is not included in that project, and we have to do that in order to replace it as well. So Sinagro, they've been on site cleaning. I've received a lot of pictures. I will share that with council so you can see the junk and true garbage that has gotten into our system. It has come under, come in way under budget, which is a good thing. So I have the first invoice for forty nine thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars, and this will be paid out of our solid waste fund. So we're just asking for approval, and they should be, they are set to be, finish up the job this week.
Questions or comments on this item? Next, we're going to be asked to approve the wastewater operations service contract with David DeGrand. City Manager Smith.
Yeah, so included in your packet is a service contract, so this will serve as our operator in charge for our wastewater treatment plant. Per the state's requirements, we are required to have an O I C in place for our wastewater treatment plant as well as our water, our water treatment plant. Jay Loomis with Loomis Consulting is handling the water side. So included is a proposal to contract with David DeGrand. He's worked servants capacity for the city a few years ago through with I A I. However, he is breaking off and creating his own, his own company to oversee this. So he's had experience working with our plant. He was involved in kind of the design and prep for our improvements project. So we are just bringing this service agreement to you for approval so that we can meet the requirements by the state. We have been utilizing Michigan Rural Water Association for our membership. We are allowed ninety days of free service for them to serve as our O I C. However, they do not do a long term. They will if needed, but it's an hourly rate, and honestly, they are limited on capacity. So it is, when talking with other companies, finding someone with the required licenses, it's becoming a struggle across the state. So we are just recommending that we enter into an agreement with David DeGrand to meet that, meet that state requirement.
Any questions or comments on this side? Councilman Williams.
Yeah, um, do we have a long term plan for how we'll resolve this issue so that we have somebody on staff?
Yeah, we actually have two individuals in within our wastewater treatment plant who have licenses. They just don't have the top one to serve in this capacity. One, Garrett Hanson, he will have that license in about a year. So he is prepping to take that exam so that we will have someone on site. So yes, we are continuing to invest in our employees so that they can get the necessary licensing to do to take on visuals.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I was just looking at the news and Grand Rapids is experiencing tremendous water issues. And, you know, I'm kind of thankful that we're at least addressing our concerns before schools are closed, then residents have to boil water, you know, in terms of, you know, their residency and things like that because of the city's water supply. So at least we're getting slapped on the hands a little bit because of the increase, but in the long run, it can let you know what could happen to your community.
Oh, absolutely. We're going to knock.
All right, next, we're going to be asked to approve City Hall closing on March twenty eighth from one to two P M for an Easter egg hunt. City Manager Smith.
Yeah, so this request is coming from our Fund and Engagement Committee. So we, they're trying to do something each month and to come together as a team. We're looking to, they want to hold an Easter egg hunt in Victor Park. So we're just requesting that we close for an hour on the March twenty eighth from one to two so that all employees can go out and spend some time together and have a little fun activity in the afternoon. I don't believe so. I think it's a Thursday. The Thursday.
Thursday.
I think it's Thursday.
Who knows?
I might have to throw snowballs at each other.
Don't say that. I'm ready to respond.
And next, we're going to be asked to approve of two applications for the E D C board, Ian Barbour and Jim Stewart. Both are local business owners. Do we have questions or comments on those? Those are on your desktop.
I guess the question that I was there was. Jim wasn't part of the management, but why aren't we selecting people who are not on boardship?
Because people are applying.
Yeah, we've been asking. On any board, but they're not being selected for it.
Any other questions or comments?
I got a question about that as well. Um, come, you may have to answer this. Is it, is there a potential for conflict there being that Jim owns the buildings that the E D C rents out?
Um, with his appointment to it? No, but I would say he would very likely have to recuse himself if the E D C board were to vote on anything having to do with that lease because he would have a direct and indirect financial interest in it. So anything having to do with businesses he's involved in, he would most likely have to disqualify himself and any kind of vote on that.
Any other questions or comments? And then next, we're going to be asked to approve resolution twenty twenty four twelve to amend the Articles of Incorporation for the E D C for the Economic Development Corporations. That as well is on your desktop. Any questions on this? Councilman French.
Um. So while I don't necessarily oppose this idea, wouldn't it be simpler if the E D C were to be able to schedule their meetings when the mayor is available rather than not? Just saying.
I guess my question, Mayor Man, these, to my knowledge, aren't the meeting scheduled when they're supposed to be? This is only for if you're not able to be there on the scheduled time.
You mean just for the scheduled meeting?
Isn't this what this is for? Just for scheduled meeting?
I think this would also apply if there was a special meeting as well. Would it not? It's turning hardness.
Says if you're not available to attend a meeting, doesn't specify special or regular, just says meeting. So it would be any be a regular meeting, a special meeting, an emergency meeting. Says meeting.
Yeah, so I guess the follow up question is, is it, do the Articles of Incorporation list the day and time in which the E D C board should meet? And the boards that I serve on, they serve, we get new members of the board and the membership is polled. When are you available to have a meeting? And when everybody can meet, that's when you meet, rather than like it's going to be at seven o'clock in the morning on the fourth Thursday of every month, you know? That would be the, that would be an easy way to do that because as board, because no doubt we're losing out on applications because people can't make a seven thirty meeting on a Thursday or a Monday or what have you, but they could make a same room meeting. And so why not just let?
That goes seven o'clock at night.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I mean, if the boards change every year or so, if people coming up, go off and nonboards, why not just use that the beginning of the year to say, okay, when are we going to meet? Can we meet when everybody can meet? And then you don't have this worrying about whether or not the mayor is going to be able to be there or whether the mayor, because I would think that, you know, if the mayor is working, you know, they may not be able to be at a meeting at a certain time because things come up. And they may want to be a part of that conversation. And so why not just make the schedule so that they can meet at a time?
Turning darkness.
So just so council's aware, while you're on that discussion, as a public body, the E D C has to post its meeting schedule for the year at the beginning of the year. That's not to say that that schedule can't change, but that schedule is set at the beginning of the year, just like council sets its annual meeting schedule. Technically, we do it immediately before the start of the year, but under the other meetings, I do have to post to the public when all the regularly scheduled meetings are there to be.
So I don't think that, and I think, you know, from my personal opinion, I think that the frustration comes when I can't be at the special meetings.
Right.
Because I do have the regular meetings on my calendar and blocked, so then my work knows, yeah, every once in a while, an emergency comes up on campus and I have to be there because my work does take priority with people that pay me to have a life in the roof over my head. So that does happen, but that does happen to everybody else, too. You know, the majority of us do work full time jobs, and I've expressed this before that it is a challenge for me to get to a special meeting when I have a day's notice. It's very hard when I have committee meetings on campus to rearrange those meetings with multiple people involved. It just doesn't work when you have multiple people with busy schedules. So I think that's where, I think this is coming from. So it's just unfortunate. In my personal thoughts, that this has to come to this because special meetings get called and I can't be there. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. The, the the E D C board has been struggling to meet. Um. I understand with consideration of special meetings that if you can't make it, you can't make it. Same as with our special meetings. If any of us couldn't make it, then we just can't make it. But having someone in place that can help to fill that, that void during either the regular or the special meetings. I think it's a benefit to their board so that they have someone present so they can meet forum. Because, you know, if they can't even meet forums, that means no business gets done for that month. And now they have to schedule possibly a special meeting in order to make up for what they couldn't do in that timeframe.
So it wasn't an issue to meet forum prior to the four members being removed. Um, we are now working to build that, that committee back to the level that it was at. And we have been bringing forth applications. So this is something that we are working towards, you know, not going to happen overnight, but there were consequences to having those four different members moved, removed.
No, I definitely get that and I understand it. Um. And but I also understand having a backup person just in case, um, forum comes in the question.
Yeah, but the issue is, so does everybody get a proxy?
For the rest of the board?
Yeah, everybody else. That's kind of my thought. Like, I'm the only one that has a stand in. Why not other members?
I think.
I think it's a little different when you think of it that way. When I'm a part of the conversations, I'm in the meetings, and then to have somebody come in brand new who may not have that historical context of previous conversations. I think that could be a challenge in and of itself.
I think that if you, if you had it with so many different people, that would not be good. Plus, you're mayor. You're the one that recommends people who are supposed to be on there. And so far, all of them seem to be showing up. But there's not even enough of them to do, to perform to do any meeting.
So again, I think it just comes to those special meetings.
We need to get those other seats filled.
And that's what we're working towards. Yep. All right, so, yeah, given the time, do you want to make sure we have opportunity for anybody who is in the gallery that would like to stand for public comments? If anybody would like to stand and address council, you may do so at this time in three minutes of yours.
Hi, my name is Virgi Ammerman. I'm the current CEO and president of the Albion Economic Development Corporation. And I live at three oh five East Main Street in Homer, Michigan. I just wanted to apologize because I forgot to send my request over to be able to give you an update tonight. So I've been trying to come on the second meeting of every month, and I absolutely forgot to send my request over to be included on the agenda. So I'm sorry for that. If anybody has any questions, especially on the resolution, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Hello, council. Hello, Mayor. Hello, city manager.
Want to give us your name?
Yes, I will in just one moment. Hello, my name is John Duncan. Stay at twelve oh three Second Street. The name of this is called Bad Roads. Bad roads, no hospital, too high of a grocery store. We, the people, have a council that don't listen. Where's all our money going? Look around, people wake up, no hardware, city keeps getting sued. Buildings downtown out of water bill too high. Need I say more? Let's see. Say more. Uh, we, let's see. They need to tell where the money went. Say more. Uh, we, let's see. They need to tell where the money went. Where I think it went is in a fund. The council need to be held accountable. They're taking our city down. Wake up, people. Put me in keyboard warriors and show up at the council meeting. What's your opinion? It's your right. It's your money. The city is acting like our money. It's their money. It's not.
Anybody else like to stand and address council? I think none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, meeting adjourned six fifty.